Alright, so let's bring this workshop together. Again, we do not have an agenda. This is an official board meeting. This is a working workshop to discuss the budget proposals that we have all diligently worked on and have submitted to each other. So where would you all like to begin this evening as far as work goes? I have no problem going right from the top with salaries and working. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to bring something to your attention. So the proposed item or budget that was given to us at forty-nine thousand and...
Fifty-nine dollars.
Fifty-nine dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The nineteen ninety, ninety-one budget was only four hundred dollars less.
There, Sue.
Hi. Hi, Sue.
At forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
Getting started. I'm sorry, say anything.
So the budget from the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one budget was only four hundred dollars less than what's being proposed for this.
Oh, perfect.
Just to give you an idea of...
So what we're discussing, Sue, is we're just gonna, I guess, jump right in and start working on a budget that we can all agree upon. And we'll start at the top and start working our way down through. Any questions, comments, concerns before we begin?
Okay. Now, what are we going to be discussing? The amount of hours? Is that what the point of contention is? Is the amount of hours the library is going to be open?
Well, actually, if you want to start with that, what we think the library's schedule should be...
And then we'll know from budget there because that will determine...
Then we'll know what we need the budget for.
Right. Let's start from the top.
Excellent idea.
Just a suggestion before we start our work. Did either of our community members want to have any say before we start collaborating? Should we offer them an opportunity for comment? I don't know if that's in our mal- in our policy or not, but...
We need all the help we can get, so...
Yeah, I don't have a problem taking your input. I think that's a fantastic idea.
No, I'm just here to learn information. I'm not here to...
Charles?
Charles here.
Charles.
I thought you were moving.
Don't hold that against me.
You just moved back, right, Charles?
Yes, sir.
I saw you on Facebook.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And you moved back from where?
Connecticut.
Oh.
Temporarily. Seasonal.
Most of my, most of my family comes from Connecticut, so I'm gonna say congratulations on the move. Right out of Hottfett.
I'm Sue Vassar. This is our library Jennifer, and of course you know Sean.
Sean Rule.
And Brianna. And Nat. And...
James.
James.
That's okay.
I just lost me. I knew Smith and I couldn't come up with it quick enough. James, I'm sorry.
So have you folks been, are you folks aware of what Mr. Foster wants to do with the libraries, a proposal to council over sixteen?
Maybe you could just give the synopsis, Sean.
Sure.
We've read it on Facebook, whatever it is.
Yeah. So Mr. Foster came to our last meeting last week and proposed, basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, board members, that this library board, which is an advisory board by bylaws to the town, basically have the board start paying for the cost and upkeep of the building and all of the other expenses, start to manage the library, basically take the library over as a board. Am I missing anything good?
He wants to eliminate the library position.
Oh, and eliminate the library. Yeah, that was the big thing. He wants to eliminate the library and staff it with volunteers?
No, he didn't say the staff with volunteers. He wanted volunteers.
Right.
But I think the two girls up there and volunteers was my assumption.
What, two girls? He didn't say anything about that. Oh, you're typing timers?
The two part timers.
Yes, part timers. And then volunteers.
Additionally.
Correct.
Okay.
Is how I understood it. It's just that with the budget, the other departments are all really scraping the bottom of the barrel to get their budgets down. And now the libraries got to see what we can do to get the budget down.
Yeah.
And that was one of the alternatives, was to go with the part-time help with volunteers.
Right. Which is what I had offered to do.
As a general consensus, what we'd like to see happen is to get rid of the two part-timers, keep the librarian, maybe make some adjustments to the hours so that we can bring the salary line, the budget down a little bit.
And add volunteers as well.
And she, our librarian, has volunteered to basically work as a paid volunteer. She is willing to forego her health insurance and benefits that she receives through the town, and she's willing to forego her retirement in the interest of the library.
That's all well and good, Sean.
Yeah.
However, are all the other department heads doing the same thing?
Of course not.
Well, the highway department has two openings, and they're not gonna replace them.
Are any other department heads giving up their benefits or hours, salary? No.
Knock it on the wall.
So I mean, I think that just tells us how dedicated she is to...
Well, that was, I think, now, I didn't get this from anybody.
And...
Just my own assumption.
Right.
That that is our only thing that we can give up. We can't give up buying books.
Well, I mean, if you'll just propose budgets...
So I mean, where are we gonna go to save money?
Well, we've kinda looked at it.
I mean, that's how I...
And my heartburn is that this library only costs the town about two percent of the overall budget that this town has. Two percent.
Which figures out to about seventy-one dollars. If you cut the library out completely, it would save a taxpayer seventy-one dollars. Reducing my salary to nothing would only save a taxpayer twenty-eight dollars a year.
You can't say, you can't say it's gonna save taxpayers because we all pay a different tax. So you can't put one figure on...
If you divide...
And that house is gonna be less than mine, or mine's gonna be more than hers, or whatever.
I think she's saying the average.
James says it's gonna be the one...
Average, right.
The farmers are gonna be a gigantic boost. My apartments up there took a seven-thousand-dollar boost, so don't give me a seventy-dollar figure on that, let me tell you.
Well, one of the proposals we have is a sixty-two percent decrease in budget from the year we're in now to what we're proposing. So I don't really think any of the other departments are cutting sixty-two percent of their budget.
No.
None.
So I don't think it's unreasonable what we're asking for.
Like I said, there's such few things that we can do, and that was one of the things we could do to reduce the budget. Other than that, what have we got to reduce?
We can reduce the budget, I think, to, at the same amount by keeping her and getting her to part-time employees.
Okay.
Have you talked to Mr. Foster since we...
Not since him and I spoke about the meeting that I had with him yesterday morning.
You're off of the board to handle that?
Yeah. So I needed to go up to drop off a bill to Ella, and Mr. Foster said, can I speak with you? And I said, I went in, and we talked about the eight-thousand-dollar check. There is a Gulliver line item up there. He wants me to bring that check up there and deposit it, and they'll immediately cut a check for you to put into your account. And then...
Look at Brianna when you're saying money. She's the treasurer.
She's the treasurer.
I actually did tell her this already. And then he said that it's obvious that the board wants to work with me, and he wants to work with the board, and I said to him that I wanted to work with him. And I told him that the only thing that I cared about was this library and the community and the history that's housed in here, that we needed to keep it here. And I, he's like, he said, you really mean that, don't you? And I said, yes, I do. That is the only thing I care about. It's not about the job. And he said, well, then let's do that. So I think it's...
When was?
Yesterday morning. Yeah, no, this morning, no. Yesterday. Yesterday afternoon.
I don't remember, like, twenty minutes ago.
Sorry, yesterday morning. I had my staff meeting this morning, so all my, all these meetings are getting confused in my head. It was yesterday morning.
Now, did you discuss your hours or what your pay would be?
No, that, no, but he wanted to let you all meet and go from there, so...
So I think really the next step would be to talk to him, let him explain about the hours and the days and...
Well, I think he wants us to come up with those hours and days that he, because we're the ones that have to deal with that as far as...
Well, I think we already suggested three days. Wasn't three days suggested somewhere?
He suggested...
He suggested, we did not.
Heard three somewhere.
Yeah, he did, we did not.
You left out the one big part is that he wants the library board to pay the...
Yes.
Estimate of ten thousand dollars for the roof repair.
Well, it won't be that much. They're just gonna repair where it's leaking.
And that's an estimated, so he's going to, what, how it was explained to me was that he was going to do up, go up and do a temporary repair...
Right.
To make sure that it does not leak until he can go back up next year and do a full repair, which...
If the money comes in...
Approximately...
To pay off the debts that we have up there so that we can borrow money. We can't borrow money right now because we don't, we've got too much debt against us. So that's why I think that he wants us to take some responsibility with the library because of the amount of money that we have. We can do it, and they can pay it back someday along the line.
They won't pay it back.
No.
Well...
We spend ten thousand dollars of the trustee's money, we'll never see it again.
And technically, your bylaws prohibit that.
Yeah.
And they do.
Flat-out prohibit that. You'd be breaking your bylaws.
Well, hopefully then that we can get it repaired in its days, and we don't have to address that.
Now, if the town council and the board of trustees wants to do a legal written agreement that we'll pay for it, you're going to pay us back within five years, or X number of time, I'd have no problem with that.
Me neither.
What about when our tax number comes in and we happen to get a grant? Wouldn't that kind of solve all our problems?
We could get grant funding for it, provided there's grant funding out there for it.
That's right.
For building maintenance repairs.
Can we give a loan to the town? Do you?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, if we have it right in your...
Because right now, they've got some of our monies that they don't have. They've got it, but they don't have it because it was spent.
It's on paper.
Right.
Yeah, but only on paper.
But it will, it will come back to us when the taxes, I mean, when the bills and the debts are paid. It's not gone from this.
Did we get that number, what we have in the account over there?
I do not, I do not.
You guessed between ten and twelve?
Well, no.
Not counting the dollar or...
No, the, so there's the twenty-five thousand dollars that came, or twenty-three thousand... Whatever. Yeah, from the Shaw estate. Then there's like fifteen hundred dollars, I believe, nine hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. I can't remember off the top of my head because it was a year ago, from Scott Fields passing away. You had the other Gulliver money from last year, then this past year's Gulliver money is eight thousand. Okay. So you're probably talking close to forty thousand.
That we can't get our hands on.
Right. If you added thirty-five thousand, yeah. Yeah, forty thousand.
So you have money that we can get our hands on. Maybe we should look into the option of giving a loan to the town to make some repairs?
If we can do that.
Do we have an attorney of our own we can consult?
Well, we haven't got an estimate on repairs yet.
No.
I mean, a repair isn't gonna be ten thousand dollars, a repair.
No.
Chris Campbell's gonna go up there, he's a mason, and he's gonna fix it, I mean...
Is it around the chimney?
No, it's, so it's the part when you go up the steps into the fiction section, that hip joint, all of the slate tiles, I had a drone go up, and all of the slate tiles are off, and the wood underneath is rotted to the point where it won't even hold the slate. So he's gonna put some temporary wood in there and fill, yeah, beside, so that he can at least adhere those slates for the winter to stop any more water leakage. There is a patch in the ceiling that's discolored. I'm not heading any drips yet, but it has gotten bigger.
How big of an area would you say?
It's probably, oh, it's sixteen-foot ceiling, so it's hard to tell from down here, but I'm gonna say if I had to, it was probably about that big. And it's gotten bigger. I mean, it started out, when I first saw it two years ago, it was maybe this big, and it's...
Okay, so it's not gigantic big?
No, and it's not cracked, the plaster's not cracked yet or anything.
So that shouldn't be a big expense.
That, no.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, I think once this, the leak is stopped, I think what's happening is it's coming in, hitting a rafter, running down, and then hitting that spot. And I think once that, he puts that temporary fix up so that it stops doing that, that we can paint over it, you won't even know that it's there.
That's right. So that really isn't an item that we really have to address right now.
No, it does need to be. You have to do it before winter.
The town doesn't have the money. See if we can do something until they get back on their feet again. I mean, they're fighting to get payroll every other week. I mean, let's face it.
And that's fine, that's fine. I have no problem, as long as we can loan it.
Well, I don't think we're gonna have to loan it, it's gonna just be a patch like this to fix.
But again, if we...
Well, we wanna reverse for...
And wait for the grants and see if we can get a grant, because it's a couple of years ago, Jennifer was talking about grants out there.
Yeah, I don't think we should gamble with our money. I mean, if we're gonna lend it, I want some, an agreement that we'll get it back.
And again, according to the bylaws, we can't do the repairs, maintenance, that's not our responsibility. So it would have to be a loan to the town, because if we start paying for repairs to this building, not only are we violating the bylaws, but we're opening up Pandora's Box to take on that responsibility in the future.
I really don't wanna leave a leak leaking.
No, no. And I don't wanna leave a leak leaking.
And it's, anything that he can do this year is only a temporary fix. It is not a permanent fix.
But it'll get us by until the town gets back on its feet again, is what I'm trying to get at.
Right, right, right.
Right.
So that we don't have to spend a disordered amount, and maybe a grant will come in, and hooray, hooray. Problem solved.
Would we wanna go as far as addressing the fifty-year-old furnace as well, because that could potentially save us money on the fuel?
And so here's another thing. There is a grant out there right now. The town needs to apply for it. I cannot myself, it has to be applied for by the town manager, and it's through the state and efficiency main, and they will install heat pumps. We already have one heat pump that is not working, and it hasn't been working for about eight months.
Have you called the...
Yes, they came out, they looked at it, there's three circuit boards that are bad on it, and he cannot even guarantee that if he replaces those circuit boards that it hasn't blown the compressor. And he said, it's, till you do all of that, you might as well just replace it.
I've had heat pumps up the apartment sound like ten years.
This one's had two repairs, and that one's had one repair. So they, they don't make them anymore. The parts to get them are getting harder to find for those two because they're not made anymore. He really highly, and he said they're not near as efficient, those that we have are not near as efficient as the new ones. So he highly recommended applying for this grant, because not only would it supersede and take care of this one, but we could possibly look at doing the same thing that we did with this one, running the, all of the ductwork and everything else to it, out to this section for our drew room, which would then make that a climate-controlled room for all of those archives. That started, it was opened up to schools in August, and it was opened up to municipalities in, I lied, it was opened up to schools in July and opened up to municipalities in August, and it runs until next August or the money runs out.
They need to be applying for that.
They do.
So Tony needs to be made aware because he's...
No, the town manager has to apply for it.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's pretty specific.
There's some cans there. May I boil one, please? Thank you.
And it may be one of those situations where this, Dan says, yeah, you fill it all out, and I'll sign it.
And, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And that's fine.
Right, but you have all the information, data to block.
Yeah.
The librarian knows best.
So what about the furnace? Because that's just supplemental heat. You can't rely on it as a primary source.
No, but I'll tell you, so these two, when they were working correctly, did make a big difference in our heating bill. And if you put another one over here, so then you've, because this is the coldest side of the building, and that's where the thermostat had to be at. The thermostat originally was over here, of course, right in front of the heat pump, so when the heat pump would kick on, our heat wasn't coming on at all. And Portland was sitting in there going, I'm really, really cold, and so, but with the three of them, if all three of them were working, and even if we considered putting one down here so that it helped with the lower level, because of course heat rises... I'm saying it would heat the floor. Yeah, I really think it would make a huge difference in the heating bill and on the workloads at that nineteen fifties.
I know, but would the grant give the library more than one heat pump?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Get a half a dozen. I'll buy one for you.
Well, it covers for anywhere in the town. It will cover for anywhere, if they wanna put them in the town office, it would, it, that's, that's what you have to do, is that's why it's a town, it's gotta be a town manager that does it, because they're looking at you doing it for the entire town.
Have you got the application that you could run off for Sean?
I don't have it right handy, but I can pull it out.
Could that be Sean's homework assignment for the weekend? Could that be Sean's homework for the weekend?
To do what?
Apply, start on the grant.
No.
No. No, like I said, it, it really has to come from the town manager, and/or the town manager would have to direct us, direct myself or...
So can you...
But you would have, you have the information needed for the grant. Yes, and I would pull it to Dan. Okay.
Okay.
But again, it's something that we can...
Do that tomorrow or the next day so that we get started?
Think about, yeah.
Perfect.
Because what I worry about is this town's not getting out of the financial problems anytime soon.
No, no.
And so if next year we lose a furnace, now they expect the board to pay fifteen thousand dollars for a new furnace.
That's what I'm saying. If we're gonna take the step of giving a loan for repairs, why don't we kind of come up with a list of the most pressing issues and just take care of them all at once rather than wait and do it again a year later?
The problem is...
Just say, wait until you need it.
Right, I, I would wait till we need it. The problem is, is that one thing I don't wanna do is pull the CD prematurely, because we'll really be shooting ourselves in the foot. So what we need to focus on is the money that we have in the checking and the money that we have but don't have at the town is really what we have for an operating. Now, this board decides that, yeah, we'll pull the money out of the CD, so no vote for me, but that's four other votes here. I think that would be...
What do we have in checking as compared to the CD?
Six thousand, seven hundred and some odd dollars, was it, the last meeting?
Seven, no, seven thousand and something, I think.
What was it, seven thousand?
I didn't bring my notes from my meeting.
Less than ten?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. Right, the CD was how much?
Seventy-something. Yeah.
This was from May, it was seventy-three in May.
So really, the operating capital that we have is less than the checking at that kind of, until the town can pony up the money to us.
But right now, it's working. Let's just wait and see. Don't start planning ahead when we don't...
Right.
It's not pushing us to do that.
Exactly.
So let's just keep paying the salaries and books.
Will either be in the checking or...
Well, it would've been in yours, that was always, that's been in there since nineteen twenties.
The drew money you're talking about?
Yeah, the two thousand dollars.
I think they gave one thousand, and we've got over two thousand because it's been there for thirty-five, forty years.
Where is it?
It should be a separate account somewhere.
Because you have the CD you have...
There was only three accounts that...
Right, there was only three accounts listed on there.
I think we put them all together, didn't we, at one time? I think it's in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, we did. We had about three of them, and we put them all together. So I think the figure you have there includes that.
All right, so to answer Sue's first question, did you see the proposed hours that I came up with?
I just got it before I came down. It took me, I happened to be looking and saw it and grabbed it.
Let me back up one second. Is the board consensus that the library, the library will do a loan to the town for repairs? If it's possible.
Yeah. I mean, depend on the amount, but yes, if you can afford it.
Right. So if we can afford to loan the town money for the temporary repairs, so long as...
On the roof only.
On the roof only, so long that we are guaranteed return of the money, we'll do it.
Do you think your attorney friend would help us write that up?
Yep, I bet he would, because he loves libraries. All right, I'm sorry. We end, off to the...
Who is going to be calling Chris Campbell? A way or...
You were in contact with Chris?
I was, and then Dan and Darren took it over, kind of. They spoke with him last week.
So Dan has his hands on it now?
I guess, yeah.
Okay, so when we get that figure, okay.
Chris had offered it to me in the first place, but, and then when I told Dan and Aaron about it, they went and ran with it.
If I may.
Yeah?
Sure.
Certainly.
Has anyone, has Chris been approached to offer his services for free?
He, he actually came to me, he actually came to me. So he was up doing a repair on the chimney, a guaranteed repair on our chimney, and he came into the library and he says, do you have a minute? And I said, yeah, and he says, I can help you with your roof. He said it's not gonna be free, but it's gonna be a lot cheaper than bringing a contractor at fifty thousand dollars up from downstate. He said, you know, I can probably, he tried, he says, maybe around ten thousand, depends on what he gets into underneath the shingles around the rotted part.
But you're, you're talking complete repair as opposed to patch?
Right, but, and, yeah.
So how about the patch job, the two of us?
Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, at that point, it was kind of taken out of...
He's got to work in operation here in a while. He's been at work. So I don't think...
Yeah, right. And he has done a lot for the library. He, our two urns were destroyed the other year, and he completely, I was able to get two given to us from an estate that was, I had approached them to buying them, and instead they decided to donate them, and he put them up and put them in and submitted them in and everything else for no charge and so on. So he has done a lot for the library, too.
You can only ask.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Beg, borrow, steal where we can.
I do.
Legally steal.
I know, I do.
All right, so the current hours of operation for the library is Monday is closed, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is open for six hours. Uh, Tuesday through Friday are seven and a half hours. And we have a proposal of Monday closed. Your, your, how many got your hours separate from yours confused.
Well, that's, so those are her hours on the right.
Okay, now, getting back to step one again, uh, the town manager would like twenty-four hours. And he want, would like to see them consecutively so that we can turn the heat down, save on fuel at the same time. So, we can't have it open that many days because that's what we're doing now.
Well, we're going from a five-day work week to a four-day work week. And I don't, honestly, uh, my personal opinion is I don't think the library for being, being open for only three days a week is enough.
I don't think so either.
I mean, we could swap out Thursday and Tuesday, have it close Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and then open Thursday, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
One of those days have it open till like seven.
That's exactly what I.
Perfect. And that would have been on Friday, okay.
No.
I'm also concerned about the, the projected heating costs in twenty-three, twenty-four, we can turn the heat down a couple of days. But right now, we've, we're planning on almost twelve thousand for heating this winter. Twenty-three, twenty-four, the, the proposed budget is fifty-five hundred, that's, that sounds to me like we're not gonna heat the building.
That's Dan's proposal, I think, when we come up with our own, we put that.
I mean, that's, honestly, so, um, I had given what my heating costs were over the last, um, few years. And it has gone over budget every single year, even at, I moved it up and I still went over. And I moved it up and it still went over, and last year, it went over by a bunch. Um, and so this is why, because of that, I originally had asked for, um, twelve thousand. And I was told no, so I dropped it down to eight thousand, I don't feel that that is enough. So I actually cut line items elsewhere to, and rolled that money into that to bring it back up to the eleven thousand, seven fifty.
Did you average your last three years on fuel costs, what was that?
You can't average, average, because it's actually five something a gallon now.
Every year it keeps going up.
But we're under a contract, so, yeah, yeah.
But still, it's a lot more than it was in the last three years.
But it also depends, too, on the kind of winter that you have, if it's a mild winter, you're great.
What was your actual fuel cost last year?
Seven thousand, four hundred and. Do you have it?
Seven thousand nine, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah. And that's why.
So I think budgeting ten thousand dollars in fuel is wise.
Right. And it'll still be close.
When I worked for the town, Darren always said, budget ten percent from what you did last year, add ten percent.
But that was before, that was crazy when, when it wasn't going crazy, yeah.
Cause it was like three something last year and this year, of course.
He actually told me to double what I budgeted, is what he told me to do, which is why I went to twelve thousand.
So as far as the Allison, do you think it would be feasible at that point to be closed Sunday, Monday, Tuesday?
Yes.
And then have the late night be on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
Either Wednesday or Thursday.
Well, I'm thinking Wednesday at our town council meeting, so you would have to be available.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So Thursday would be ten to five, uh, so.
Ten to seven?
Ten to seven.
Or eleven thirty to seven?
You're talking Thursday.
Thursday would be eleven thirty.
Thirty to seven.
Closed on Tuesday.
Basically, you're just moving all the days down.
So your four-hour workday could then be on Tuesday rather than Monday.
Okay.
And Wednesday will stay ten to five thirty?
Yep.
So Tuesday is eight to noon.
And Jennifer, I don't mind coming down if you have a lunch hour.
Right.
And set up the.
And Mary Schneider has already offered to volunteer, um, and I have about three or four other people that I've been in discussions with.
And I also heard, I don't know if it was in a council meeting or somewhere, um, someone had suggested pooling employees, like. If you need to pull one of the girls from the town office to cover an hour lunch break or something.
It's hard though, because, so again, here, you can't ever know when it's gonna all of a sudden get busy.
Yeah.
You, you have nobody for an hour and then you've got five people and it's like, where is he? It, it's like, oh, that person went into the library, I think I'm gonna go in too, yeah, I will too, and then all of a sudden, you, you're just, you have a bunch.
One of my questions I had was, what are the required, what's required for duties and training for somebody that would, to sit there for an hour?
So, to just sit at the circulation desk, um, it's not a lot, other than safety. Um, they do, they will have to do hazardous communication, they will have to do, um, evacuation plan. And they'll have to be trained on privacy, um, issues.
So someone could conceivably come off the street with an hour of training and.
Pretty much, yeah.
They're having to sort of shame that, get the paper out.
Yeah, you know, you gotta check in, I mean, if I could train my husband to do it, cause he's, he's covered my lunches a few times. When I've been really desperate, um, and, um, and really honestly, the biggest time. Is, one of the things that the main state library really, um, highly suggests is two people on duty because of safety issues. If somebody falls, if somebody, if you get a, a patron who has mental issues or something like that. There's always somebody else there to dial line one-one.
And hopefully you can get the volunteers to go in and work half all portion something.
Yeah, um, and especially at, at winter time, closing at night, because it is, e- either that or we gotta do something with lighting out here. Because we have no light out here at night, I mean, it's.
There's something on the wall.
There is, but it is so bad and it just will not get any better, Chris has changed the bulb, I don't, can't tell you how many times. And the big one overhead, that one, um, evidently, when it was first installed years and years ago, it was installed upside down. So the water is running into it. So Steve Radeski had turned it around, but it's still, it comes on and then it goes off, and then it comes on and then it goes off, so.
I can see it do that from my house in the winter.
What's your hourly wage?
Uh, sixteen ninety-three an hour.
Sixteen what?
Sixteen ninety-three.
We have a, whether you're on mistake.
When I first started as director, I was part-time, I was still considering the department head.
So far, so good.
And I still accrued vacation and holiday pay.
My gosh, this is.
Like to at least keep that.
Yeah, that was another question.
Because I have a lot to save that month.
They'd have to pay you out.
Anything over thirty-two hours is.
Well, I would like to continue to be able to keep throwing it and, and use it and being able to use it. Um, cause I did, it was, I was grandfathered in previously that way, I should be grandfathered in that way.
Um, and if we're gonna propose this decrease in hours and, and giving up your benefits, can we make that temporary? Can we make an agreement that once the town is in better financial position and we can?
It's all hard to put something in writing when you don't know the future.
I know that, but.
So I wouldn't put anything in writing.
It could be a negotiating tool.
Yeah.
Ask for it.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, cause I don't want this to be the permanent situation of a library.
I don't wanna set a precedent that.
If you did it this year, you can do it again next year, you can do it the year after that and so on, because really, this library needs a full-time librarian. This is why it was made into a full-time position. Um, even my reviews flat out say, there's a lot that is involved. Um, it, it's just, it's a lot more, people don't realize that goes on behind the scenes between ordering the books, finding the grants. Doing the safety stuff, staying with the, the training and everything else that's required. Um, there's a lot, it's a lot, like I said, I know I can tell you that, um, for a main, for a. Masters of Library Science, how many hours does that take?
Um, right now, I am thirty hours a week in homework.
But I mean, as far as credit hours, what is it required?
Um, fifty-six.
Yeah, so right now.
For masters on top of the bachelor's.
In the last two years, I have, I'm over a thousand hours of training. And so.
Okay, let's get back on track, so the salary would be twenty-five, one thirty-five rounding up.
Wait, twenty-five or twenty-nine? We didn't cut any hours in addition to that, we just shuffled the day off.
Okay, gotcha, I thought we kinda did.
No, so we'll move that eight to twelve up to two six.
So it'll stay twenty-nine, nine, thirty-two, twenty-four?
Okay, so what we're proposing is taking the salary line down from the current, we've adjusted it amount at seventy-eight thousand, three seventy-two. Taking it down to twenty-nine thousand, nine thirty-two.
Just on your figures, round everything up to the nearest dollar, cause that's how they do it. Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, nine thirty-two.
It's right on there.
Which is her current hourly amount at thirty-four hours in the top sheet.
So I'll call it twenty-nine, nine thirty-three.
You have that show right on that sheet, yeah, round up to the nearest.
Call that twenty-nine, nine thirty-three.
Rebounding that.
I'm looking.
Twenty-nine, nine thirty-three.
Why don't you take this, Jane, because this is a paper right here that we're talking about.
And you're also, if you're also cutting the two part-time people, you have to take that off, um, the savings as well.
Well, that twenty-nine is the only salary that would be.
Right, I know, but I meant, if you're looking at the salary line from what it currently is now, if you're removing two part-time people. And I'm cutting my hours, you need to combine all of that savings so that they can see what that total difference is.
Right, that will come out at the final, final budget.
So we're cutting out forty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for this.
Forty-eight, forty-eight, four forty?
And that probably would've gone up even a hundred from January, like thirteen, thirteen forty or thirteen fifty for the minimum.
All right, so benefit social security, that, you have to pay, you have to pay the FICA, so that's twenty-two ninety.
Um, Sean, on the social security line, I took my number from your sheet, twenty-seven forty-two, where did you get that number?
So the, the salary is twenty-nine, nine thirty-three, multiply that times seven point six five per second. That'll give you your FICA.
Okay, so we can drop that down.
Yeah, so twenty-two ninety on that, so that brings that down. Dues and subscriptions.
What does that pertain to?
Okay, so, let me pull my sheet here.
Did you say hour line? And then the board of?
The, um, dues and subscriptions line item, it covers, um, the genealogy databases, um, occasionally our website fees. Depending on that, I can either take it from there or I can take it from the office supply.
Things like that.
Right, so, and we, it, main state library standards require us to have a website. And it's gotta be a fully fledged, it's, can't just be a one-page website, it's gotta be a fully fledged website.
Okay, what about your training?
Um, that's a different line item, that's, that's education and training. Um, but also what comes out of there is the main library association and the public library association. Um, and the main archives and museums, and those three are really, really important. Because there is a lot of grants that are available, but you have to be a member. If you're not a member, you can't apply for them.
Yeah.
And especially, um, the main library, the public library, um, and the, those three are just, I, I can't even stress that enough. And I haven't had them for the two, last two years because of COVID.
Are you a member of the ALA?
I am not.
Okay.
Yep, I've never, we've never been.
I don't know that you have to be a member.
Sometimes, some of them, some of the grants, right, some of the grants require it, some don't, but they were just way too out of our price range. That's why I never, I've never pursued getting a membership.
Member of the ASLA, you would, for this expensive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's, one line at a time.
Okay.
If you have questions, we'll answer questions regarding the line.
Yeah.
Uh, dues and subscriptions, is that something the board wants to pay in full or do you wanna split it with the town?
I would, yeah.
I see negotiate from there, split it.
Is a thousand dollars enough to cover?
I go, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're going to propose five hundred and pay five hundred?
Uh, we're gonna propose a thousand dollars and we pay five hundred.
Okay. Okay.
You're on a different page now.
Sorry, I'm confused here.
We went back to breathe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at mine, who, which one do you guys?
Okay, I'm just looking at the, the one we're writing on.
Right, I'm looking at the blank one that we filled out.
Yeah, me too. So we're considering, instead of five hundred, for dues and subscriptions, a thousand. And then we're going to pay half?
Yeah.
Is that it?
So currently you have, so for this year, you have fourteen hundred dollars.
Right.
How much of that are you using?
I haven't used any yet because I would feel that I've read it was pretty much.
How much would you need out of that?
A thousand will be enough.
Perfect.
That's what I said, yeah.
So I'm gonna put a thousand on what line?
It will cover those three.
Dues and subscriptions.
And then the board is gonna offer to pay half.
Perfect.
Word.
My website.
So the two fifty means five hundred.
Three hundred and twelve dollars and then the other three subscriptions.
All set on dues and subscriptions? Education and training.
That really is just for the fire, any, um, sexual harassment training that I have to pay for. Um, the fire extinguisher training through COVID, the reason I was able to lower it to the three hundred at the time, um.
The town does those trainings, why aren't they not?
Oh, it gets charged to me.
The fire department charges you?
No, the sexual harassment training did.
Are they doing it online or in person?
They did it in person, I did it online during COVID because I, I did all of my trainings online.
So if you go to the town office, do a sexual harassment training, they're billing your department?
They did.
What a crock of shit.
What do you ever have to go for training up at the town office for?
A, a lot of our trainings, I have to go up for our fire extinguisher training, we have to go up for our sexual harassment training, um.
Once a year?
Yes, yep, I do the, um.
So they're splitting the cost undoubtedly between all the departments then, because all the.
I don't know, I just know I got billed for it, I don't know how, I don't get to see other department budgets, um.
Jennifer, would your temporary people need training?
Uh, they have, yes.
Zero this out.
Right, no, they do.
Right, they have to be trained as well.
Be trained on all of that, fire extinguisher, sexual harassment, privacy, um, evacuation. They have to do, um, the hazardous communication, those I can all, the hazardous communication, um, the.
Well, I'm an instructor in all of them, I will train the staff for free, I'm also a certified American Red Cross instructor.
See, and I have to have that.
I will certify you.
Okay, and I have to have other pathogens too.
I can teach that too, certified.
This may be a really good thing to collaborate with the school with, we have to do all those annual trainings as well. Using the same system might not be a bad idea.
Right.
And I don't know what we pay for that.
I have no idea.
Cause we do, yeah, we do all that too.
But if he's trained.
But we do it online.
Yeah, this way we wouldn't have to move staff anywhere, if, if he can do it here. Some of it, yeah.
Some of it, but if.
I was told that I can't do, um, like my sexual harassment training, that, I was told that I had to have that in person. And there was another, yeah.
You can have it online or in person, doesn't matter, as long as.
Oh, and then my fir-, my first aid, my, uh, AED and first aid, that had to be in person too.
Yeah, that does have to be in person, yeah, cause I can, I'm certified to teach all that, that's what I do for the tribe.
Right, I know you can, cause I was gonna take it just so I could, I was actually gonna pay for it so that I did.
Charge us thirty-six dollars for a CPR card, so that's why.
Cause they forgot about us the last time.
That's what a CPR cost would cost, thirty-six bucks.
So do we need that three hundred dollars for, for education and training?
Uh, the only, I can't see why we would, I mean, you know, there's, there is, like I say, in, in my line items. You know, there are other things, dealing with mental, people that come in with mental issues and so on, there is special trainings that way, but.
So let's leave a hundred dollars to cover CPR cards, um.
Do your volunteers need CPR cards?
No, I, becau-, as long as I'm here.
But if you're on lunch and somebody's covering, they would, they don't have it either though, right now.
Okay.
So.
Let's just leave a hundred dollars.
Okay, all right, for Jen.
Are we covering, splitting it? Or are we just gonna cover it?
Cover it.
Hundred bucks, yeah, I'd say we can cover it.
We'll cover it, okay.
All right, office supplies, which is gonna be pens, pencils, photocopiers, supplies, paper.
Book jackets.
Book jackets.
My labels.
Those have gone up.
A lot.
What hasn't gone up?
A lot.
I know.
And, and I actually even say that in here, normal years, we purchase about fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred new books. Even if only half of those hardbacks require jackets, that means we need to spend about four hundred and twenty-five to six hundred and twenty-five, um, dollars. Just on book jackets, I mean, it's, and two, um, it, and this is what I did. Um, if I can find it cheaper because of somebody going out of business or something like that, I grab that stuff. But I can't always guarantee that that's gonna happen.
No.
Well, you can.
Um, so I have to prepare as if it's not going to happen.
Well, I thought five hundred was too low, too low.
It is.
Yeah.
Cause I have paper, I mean, honest to goodness, I mean, it's.
What did you actually spend last year?
Um, I don't have that right in front of me either. I can tell you, he had on there what I had spent the year before, I didn't get any of last year's actual numbers from LOS, I have no idea.
It'd be hugely helpful if we had those over there.
Yes, it would, and I had asked for it too, um, so the year before, um, but we were closed because for, um, early of twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we spent seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars of that, um, but we were closed to the public. So we didn't have our daily people coming in, I need to print this out, I need to print that out.
So the twenty-five hundred, was that what you came up with for the year's budget?
No, it's not seeing this year's, but yeah, Dan proposed five hundred, and I proposed, I put it up to seven fifty.
Yeah.
Do you know how much you've spent out of that line to date?
Uh, yes, actually I do, but I haven't had to order anything. So office expenses, as of right now, there's still twenty-four sixty-five in there. Right now, I'm gonna need, in the next month, I'm gonna need ink for, um, the copier. And those, I think, run about a hundred dollars for a toner cartridge, a hundred to two hundred dollars for a toner cartridge. Mine's a little cheaper because it's an older model.
Okay.
And, um, I'm gonna need book jackets, I think I'm down to one roll of book jackets. I just ordered, and there is money that's gonna be coming out of that, um, because I just bought DVD cases and, um, the sleeves for those.
For what?
Because we get DVDs.
For what?
Movies, for people to watch.
Oh, see, okay.
Yeah.
For people to check.
Well, it's like DVD, I was thinking computer DVDs, why are we, why are we handing out TVs?
No, 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 no. We, so we have over eighteen hundred DVD movies up there to choose from.
I do have that.
Yeah.
Some people really do check them out.
So what do you think?
We get a lot of those.
What do you think is a safe amount?
I would say fifteen hundred I would be comfortable with, I can make do with that.
So that's. Okay. And you say the board pays or?
Seven fifty, yeah, seven fifty town?
Yeah, I grab. Yeah.
Um, kinda backing up a little. This, this new budget we're gonna propose, is it going to replace the twenty-two, twenty-three that has already been?
I think that's the idea.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Cause the twenty-two, twenty-three is what Dan has proposed?
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four is what he proposed.
This is my actual, right now.
Right.
Okay.
And I think he wants this to replace this too, for the rest of the year, starting in January.
Okay.
Okay.
How is that, how does it screw, if you have to, in the middle of fiscal year, you can just. Have to cut it?
I know. He's, what is, I see what he's.
He's trying to save money for the rest of the year to put towards the following year.
So whatever, but whatever surplus you have in the budget does not roll over to your budget.
Not, to, not to my budget, it rolls over into a general fund.
Right, cause any surplus that the municipal, uh, the department budgets have at the end of the year, um, will go into the general budget that's used to pay for the upcoming budget.
Alright, so, books and videos. Currently, we got fifty-five hundred in this year's budget, Dan's proposing twenty-five.
I've already spent this year thirteen ninety-one and, uh, there's another couple of bills out there.
Which one are you talking about now?
The books and videos.
Books and videos.
Right, right.
And honestly, we don't buy any videos, all of the eighteen hundred videos that we have up there have all been donations. From patrons and other libraries, we've never, I've, in the eight years that I've been here, I've never bought a DVD. I liked, I bought two DVDs, but they were to complete a series that was donated.
So what do you think a fair number for that line would be?
I would, I would really like to see that, well, also, you have to understand, nine hundred and ninety dollars comes out of there to pay my cart- catalog.
That was what I wrote in on mine. The nine ninety for book system, so we can have it.
The ATM. Correct. And that's my cataloging system, it also allows people to, um, put hold on books at, from home. They can even, you know, put it in their book bag, check it out, and we get it ready and it's, all they do is stop in and pick it up and we hand it to them.
So is fifteen hundred enough? Two thousand?
Not really, because if you take nine ninety off of that, that only leaves me.
I know, but all these donations we've got through memory of somebody is for books. We're not supposed to be saving money and getting interest, we're supposed to be spending it for the people that give it to us.
But you're already spending it for the roof now, you've already said that you would spend it for the roof.
Nothing to do with having books in the library.
I understand, but you only have six thousand in there and the money, the cash is not actually sitting up at town office right now. That's what I was doing, I was using that money.
I know, we've got it in, we've got it in the checkbook though.
Right, but I was using that money.
And the Gulliver fund of eight thousand, whatever, I can't imagine ten thousand to fix a hole that big on the roof. We don't know that though till we get the estimate.
The roof, the hole in the roof is, is ten feet long.
You said this big.
No, 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 that's the stain in the roof, in the ceiling.
Oh, I thought you meant the hole in the roof.
No, the hole is a ten-foot long section of shingles missing.
Is that where, is that where the copper's missing on the?
There is no copper, no, it's just the hole where the two.
Right on the ridge one?
It's a ridge of slate and they come in and they sit along that ridge the whole way down, and what's happened is it's rotted along that edge and they've all split apart like this and they're just, they're hanging, so.
Oh, God, I said how big is the hole and you went.
Oh, no, I, I thought you were talking about the stain in the ceiling, yeah.
Alright, so what do you, what do you propose for a books, videos, books and videos line?
I would like to see three thousand, I really would, that leaves me two thousand to purchase books and nine ninety.
And then will we pay half of it?
We'll pay half.
I think we should pay it all, we've got the donations that people.
Well, I mean.
Cause if the town's willing to split it with us, we can split it.
Well, I know, but that's a bargaining chip.
We're tacking up the money here that we're not gonna have to offer for the roof.
We are.
We take too much.
I, yeah, I was just starting to wonder that, because you said we have what, eight thousand dollars? From the Gulliver fund for books.
We're on a different.
You do actually have eight thousand.
That will be in our checking account?
Right, well, yes, that Gulliver fund money can only be used for books, so.
Okay.
So do you wanna bite the bullet and have the board pay the whole fee of jacking up to four thousand dollars for books?
Yep.
And take it out of the Gulliver fund, is that?
Yeah.
That's what it's for. And like we call them, money, that's where we got it, was from people, don't be.
And that gives Jen an extra thousand dollars. So she'll actually have three thousand dollars to spend on books.
So out of board proposal, we're going to put?
Four thousand.
Four thousand?
And then board contributes four thousand.
Okay. The next hour responsibility, because we've got the money.
Okay, so we're up to fifty-three, fifty that we're contributing, just contributing so far.
So, so am I correct in your proposal is zero to the town, but you're actually gonna pay for.
Pay the four thousand.
Spend up to four thousand.
Yes.
So your, so your number on that line is probably gonna be zero, am I correct?
Uh.
On, on that column?
The town share would be zero.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
So it's not four thousand, it's gonna be zero.
No.
Uh, maybe I'm filling this out wrong, but I'm putting the, the total number under, and then a separate column for what we're contributing.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm doing.
That's what I'm doing too.
Okay.
But when we make the proposal for the board, that number would be a zero.
Correct.
Okay, and show that we are willing to pay X number of dollars, yeah.
It's like I did on the budget that I had made out.
Yes.
Where are the budgets here? Showing what the board would pay, do you want me to pay?
Yeah, that's this one.
Periodicals, do you wanna bring periodicals back, not gonna lie, I kinda like having the Bangalore.
I, I, and I agree, I agree, um, I can tell you that through Revistas, which is the easiest and the cheapest way to do it. Cause I, I literally sat there and I added up when, before I signed up with Revistas, which I haven't had for two years now. I literally sat there and totaled what we spent by us doing the subscriptions ourselves. And the time that I spent trying to keep up with it compared to Revistas, and it was like a forty percent savings. Letting Revistas do it. And if you tell me which ones you want, that's what changes your bill, um, and we had a lot of different ones at the time and it was like nine hundred bucks.
So what periodicals go up, would go up the most?
So, um, your, um, your cooking, your crafts, your family circles, your newspapers, um.
I say we just get the newspaper because I get magazines and it's mostly advertisements now.
Yeah, paper magazines.
I say, I say get rid of the newspapers, cause I can pick up my phone and read the Bangalore.
That's what I do.
See, that's why I have not, that is why I cut that item, I have not, I literally, that's.
So is anyone, does anyone ask for periodicals?
Sure.
I do.
You do, which do you like?
Well, I wanted to read the journal.
Okay, yeah.
Wall Street Journal?
No, the local.
The local journal?
Oh, the local jour- yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's nice to have in here, so you're spending.
And that's thanks to nothing.
You're spending a thousand bucks?
And then the only one, um, was a Black Flag of that, which is the one from across the border.
Where do you have those?
We've alw- they, they've always gotten those.
They give them to us or we have to buy them?
No, we have to buy them, it's eighty-nine dollars a year, ninety dollars a year.
And were, and were those going out?
Because people have, from here have family over there and vice versa, because we're a border town.
So can we?
Something for, for periodicals would be a good idea, I mean, that's, that's an access thing for people who can't have a subscription.
Right. We can, um, can we pay for that thousand bucks out of the Gulliver money?
Yes, yep, it's for books and, and videos, or books and periodicals.
So periodicals.
Periodicals.
Is there a way, if you get a subscription as the library?
Yeah.
Some other patron can give out the password or?
No.
Whatever?
No. Um, so you could, we can do it here in the library, um, like if you bring your own laptop in or something, I could possibly sign you in that way. But then I would have to make sure that you were logged out before you left. And the reason being is because you can change our subscription. You know, so it's just not a good idea to give out passwords for anything.
Historical preservation, we're all set on that one at a zero dollars?
Yeah.
And heating fuel.
Everybody's stressed, isn't it?
Yeah.
I honestly say we could put it at twelve thousand.
Uh, that's exactly what I said, that's, and that's what Darren recommended.
I changed my twelve thousand to a ten thousand when I saw someone else would put that ten thousand, I thought, well, that's low, but, okay, I'll go with.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I agree.
It looks like to be fifty-five hundred, but it seems to me you're responsible to, to plan on that and then not be prepared.
Right, because then, so all we do is shut the library, and even then you've got pipes that freeze, so then you're spending money elsewhere.
Yes. Yes.
So.
I agree.
Twelve thousand, and that's not gonna be a town expense. Telephone.
Why didn't he drop down the phone, that's not gonna be any cheaper.
Because he thinks that, um, the librarian doesn't need a cell phone. But, so my emails that come in, were coming in on my personal thing, which are sunshine laws, and I don't really appreciate having to have my personal.
So you have a work cellphone?
Right there. Yeah, eighty, eighty, eighty-seven dollars a month.
A month?
That's crazy. But they, are you telling me?
But it's unlimited.
The town of Fort Fairfield doesn't have a, a plan from the department heads?
No. No.
Cheaper than that?
No, and I, and I've gotten phone calls at nine o'clock at night when they couldn't get the door to lock out here because it was frozen solid in the middle of January.
Do you have your own personal cellphone too?
I do not. I have my tablet that I use, that's what I do.
Why do they not have an account, all the firefighters, these have phones?
Yeah, we had all, every one of my offices.
I, they went with a different company, this is.
You could go to Walmart, do the prepaid thing for less than that.
That's what I did out of my own money.
Yeah.
For eight years. And then Sean gave me his, and we did that, and then that, the battery literally went like this.
How much a month, eighty-seven?
Yeah.
And then you have the, the plan line?
The plan line, but that's, I don't know, I don't ever see that bill.
But they bill it to you, right.
I don't ever see it, I don't ever see an electric bill either.
Yeah, the town, I bet, who pays it?
And then charges it.
So these numbers are estimations? Well, really, the town is gonna be, pay the water bill and the light bill anyway, I mean, this is just a figure that.
So what are we doing on telephone?
Would they allow you to shop around for a better deal or does that have to go through them?
I had, when I, even to do this, I even asked if I could take this one over when all the discussion was going on. And they would have to cancel this completely, Ella would have to cancel it, I don't have any, I can't do anything with this. All I could do was when his phone took the crap, I had to go pick out a phone, this one was free with a plan. So.
Which company is it?
US Cellular.
So the town has their own cellphone plan that police, fire, and everyone is attached to?
I have no idea, I don't.
I'd say not, cause it would be much cheaper than that.
Because when I was, not really.
Really?
No.
I, cause when I was here, before I left, I switched us all over to a, a FirstNet, which is through AT&T. And it was, it was cheaper, but you have to be a first responder to get it.
First responder or something like that.
Okay, yeah.
And that's why she couldn't get it.
Right.
And that's why any town staff like Andrea or Kevin Sinol or any of them couldn't get it, it was just police and fire only.
Okay.
And I personally can't afford a cellphone.
Right.
I don't use a cellphone.
Especially now that we just cut your wages.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't afford it before.
Right.
You know, and I, for, I had a track phone that I would buy a forty-dollar card and I would run out of time before I ran out of minutes. Cause it just, and then it was just like, this is just crazy, I'm throwing money away because I'm not using it enough.
Right.
So the sixteen fifty, is that gonna cover the expenses for your phone that Dan proposed?
Yeah.
Alright. So that's sixteen fifty on the town.
Shame on them for not shopping for a better plan.
Why, why would yours stay?
I mean.
Cause that's mine's up there too.
Is yours unlimited data and everything else? And that's unlimited?
I don't know, yeah, it's unlimited text, talk, I can get.
And data?
Canada and Mexico.
What's the service provider?
It's through US, it's through Sprint, but it's, um.
See, Sprint doesn't have cell phone towers up here.
I have USA.
So you can't use your phone?
Well, I, I can't, it depends where you are.
Yeah, where you stand, it's all around.
And I even said that.
The town office people, Kevin, what, they?
Yeah, there's gotta be enough department heads outside of first responders.
I was the, when I, when I went for this one.
All the public works, so it's Darren and Danny Falls, he gives his personnel, the rec department, you.
Cause you established you need to add a line so many times.
Right.
Ella said that I was the only one on with US Cellular still. This was.
Where'd everyone else go?
I have no idea, they won't tell me.
That's foolish. Alright, utilities, three thousand dollars Dan has for proposal.
So this year you're at forty-two fifty, where does he plan to cut out utilities? Are you still paying for internet? I mean, I can't see it going down that much.
They, no, the internet's free.
Oh, so this is just.
We are grandfathered. Yeah. Yep, we are grandfathered in with Spectrum to have free internet, and I can never ever make any changes to it, if I do, it will wipe that out and it would jump to like a hundred and twenty a month.
That's the best one anyway.
But, um.
So the utilities is covering your?
Water, sewer, and electric.
And electric is going out again.
Yeah.
So...
So do you think three thousand is enough to cover it under Dan's proposal?
Well, um, I'd...
You don't see the bills, so you don't...
I can, I don't ever see the bills. Um, I can tell you that, right now, um, I should only be at thirty-three point three-three percent for my budget, and it's at thirty-seven point five-nine.
And how much have you expended so far?
I've expended, um, two, I've got two thousand six hundred and fifty-two left, says that I've expended fifteen ninety-seven.
Fifteen ninety-seven?
Fifteen ninety-seven since...
Sixteen hundred bucks.
June first.
Since June first.
July first, sorry, yeah.
So, cause I have October, September, August, and I can tell you that I was over...
You're not even halfway through your budget?
No, I'm not, and I tried to tell them this.
Okay.
Um, so...
Three thousand is enough to cover it?
Yeah, even my first month of July, I was supposed to be at eight point three-three, well, that might have pulled some of June's too. That was at fourteen point three-eight percent. At, in August, I should've been at sixteen point six-six, and I was at twenty point seven-nine.
For utilities only?
Yes, for utilities only. In September, I should've been at twenty-four point nine-nine, and I was at twenty-nine point two-six. So I've hit it, I've gone over every single month.
Okay.
And it's out of my control.
So we'll put that at forty-five hundred?
Or they're thinking that with fewer days, that they would, they're going to do it in a moment? Is that what they're thinking?
If there's a possibility of adding heat pumps, that's gonna make it go up even more.
Right.
So the only bill that would go down would be your water.
And you're still heating your water because the radiators.
Oh, we have radiators.
They're right, they're radiators, so you're still heating your water that way too.
Right, but that's gonna be more worried.
Right, but it, I mean, we're only taking out one day a week of the library being closed, so I can't see what we've done. No, it's not a lot.
If Dan wants to put it at three, put it at three. I don't think it's enough either.
You don't think that's enough for three days?
Four days.
Four days a week?
I thought we were down to three.
No, no, we're down to four.
Four eight-hour days? And then you're working on the fifth day. You're going up to thirty-two hours? Don't, you can't hit thirty-two hours. Because you have to pay benefits.
No, you don't.
Twenty-eight point, work, twenty, twenty-eight point five hours.
The library will be open when you... Okay, as long as you keep it under thirty-two. What happens at thirty-two?
You have to pay the benefits.
You have to, so...
She's gonna be working up.
Thirty-four hours.
It, it doesn't matter, I'm sorry, I've gotta be out of here by six o'clock, we've got fifteen minutes.
Yep. You're still not meeting the criteria though of twenty-four hours, and that's what they suggest.
Right.
So...
All right, I, we can, we can put it at the forty-two fifty, I think that's reasonable, because if she goes over... So the way, the way it's gonna operate is, is so long as she doesn't go over, over the overall budget of the town, she's in golden shape. But, if her bottom line goes over...
Right.
That's where we can cut it off.
Right, cause I can move from other line items.
So I don't think, I might work with heating oil and electricity, heat pumps versus heating fuel, right?
Okay. So that can be adjusted.
Like I can even pull from, if I have money left over in my office supplies, I can request them to move money from that into another account that's in ja-, in danger of going over.
But I don't think we should...
But I shouldn't...
Rob Peter to pay public, so I say put it at forty-two, forty-three hundred, whatever you want.
I think I, and the, I've only ever done that, had to do that twice. And it was for heat and electric.
Forty-two fifty on utilities? And the town is paying utilities? And equipment and maintenance?
What is that?
So that pays for if our copier get, breaks down, um, if I have a monitor go bad. I will say, if I get a monitor that goes bad, I go to a first shop and I buy it for fifteen bucks. And that's what I've done since the day I started. If an actual computer, hard drive goes bad, that's something different, I would probably at that point approach you, because all of those were actually purchased with money from, um, the Finland estate. So, um, I would probably approach you at that point. It also though, um, let me use my list, just because it's easier for me to remember, I know there's things that I'm forgetting that it does, um...
Was that the updating the fire extinguishers every year?
No, no, that's building maintenance, that's the next one.
Which is zero.
Here's a prime example though, but with the Shaw money, the twenty-three thousand, was going to eliminate or alleviate my issue. Right now, I, we've got a major fault somewhere in our internal wiring, computer wiring, network wiring, cause it's been here since the last thirty years. And it runs through the ceiling, which you can't get to.
Right.
Um, I got a quote, like I said, from Reboot, um... That Shaw money will alleviate that, so that's not a problem.
But you've gotta do it for estimates though, you just can't take the figure, you gotta...
I, I understand that, I just meant that the Shaw money will handle that, and I will approach heuristic technologies.
Will provide and try to get it all. So is five hundred enough on three foot maintenance?
Um, yeah, it, it should be. Um, I just may have to go to, uh, approach you guys if I do have a major computer failure.
Are we gonna cover that? I could get some, I think that's an operation expense, I think that's...
Yeah.
You wanna split it? Our bylaws are gonna say. Right.
Okay, building repair.
Building repairs, we're gonna address that potentially with a loan to the town. So you don't need to put anything in there?
No, you do, that's where the, that's where all of my inspections come from. Um...
Oh, okay.
That's where the elevator inspection comes from, which is about, um, I believe it was four hundred.
I put two thousand on my proposal for the time.
Right, um, that's what pays for, um...
How much did you spend last year?
How are you?
I'm getting all my papers confused here.
Too many going.
I do. Um, twenty-one, twenty-two, actual, uh, was fifty-nine, fifty-two.
Six thousand?
Yes.
Um, were there any repairs made that year?
Yes.
What was it?
Um, part of that money was taken for this roof.
How much did it cost you for your, like, your inspections and stuff like that?
Okay, so my elevator inspection, um, take this, and I, glad I had it down here, and again, I'm, I've lost my papers. The, the one is two thousand, or is two hundred and seventy-five dollars, the other one is two hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, main accessibility has to come out and do the weight testing and, um, all of that. And then once that's signed off on, then the state sends their contracted inspector out. And then, once you have both, and that's the two fifty, and then you send both of those inspections in to the state with your seventy-five-dollar filing fee, and that's for the elevator.
So two seventy-five and two fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, so, say a pipe needs repair or whatever, that would go into that line.
Correct, yeah. My fire extinguisher inspections come out of there, and that's, I think, sixty dollars is, um...
Per?
No, it does, that should do all of them.
So we're at six sixty? So far, we're at six sixty.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to think what else comes out of there.
A thousand dollars, is that?
A thousand dollars cover the operating costs for inspections?
Yes.
Under builder repair?
Yeah.
And we're gonna not consider the roof repairs in this line, that's maybe something to reserve.
Correct.
Okay, and miscellaneous. Which is cleaning supplies.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Flowers for their urns out front in the spring, things like that, occasional cleaning supplies.
Three fifty enough?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're at board contribution of sixty-three fifty. Which is gonna leave us, uh, less than two thousand in the checking account, unless we get that other eight thousand.
Right, but that's, yeah, technically that can only be used for books.
Right.
Okay, so... Maybe you can add with the spring?
Yes.
Builder repairs, we decided on a thousand.
Fifty-nine, five, seventy-two.
Does it?
Yeah.
Three fifty.
Is fifty-three, two, twenty-two to the town.
Okay, fifty-three, two, twenty-two? Okay. Okay.
Well, that's a piece of total savings from a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Right, and it is not a whole lot more than Dan's proposal.
No.
Okay. So are... So we're cutting out sixty-one percent from the current, so it's a sixty-one percent savings.
Okay.
Could I have the, um, the board figure again of what we would contribute?
We would contribute sixty-three fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the savings to the town from the current budget is sixty-one percent with a monetary value of eighty-two thousand and forty-seven dollars.
Okay.
And you're con-, are you still considering the four days, not the three? Yes. So three consecutive days closed, except for you'd be working one of those days for four hours in this. Can you wear a jacket? I'm just kidding, but, I mean...
Yeah, it's pretty black, blanket, wear a jacket.
Yeah, I do that now, cause there's no, my heat, well, my heat wasn't working in my office.
All right, what's the four hours for?
That is when I do my grant searches, if I have to be out the other hours out front, circulation desk and so on, the patrons, I have to have some time to be able to search for grants, order books, things like that, do my classes, all of that. That's...
That's like what she does right now on Mondays, she works wherever, so we're just moving that to...
Yeah. Correct. That I, you know, you get halfway through a grant, some of them, you're, you're on a time limit, they log you out automatically if you don't sit and do it, and you've lost, you lose everything that you've done.
Let me ask you this, Jen.
You stood up.
So that you wouldn't have to commit to a potentially cold building moment, that would you consider working extra on, under, uninterrupted hours on those days of the labor days?
Um, Saturday's your shorter day now, but...
Well, that's a good, good time to have your volunteer there.
I mean, it actually would give you more free time.
Right.
How about the, um, day that you're open later where you don't, well, I can't commit six in the morning, I worked at seven at night last night.
Yeah, that's the thing, I mean, I'm already here, um...
Because we just told him twenty-four hours, so I think you've got to have it. Well, that was a suggestion, I mean, that's not a... I think it's pretty well written down, it was twenty-four hours consecutive days to keep the heat. Half of, half of the savings that we're, they're hoping to keep is the heat as well as the... His proposal, my bar proposal. So if you're gonna have volunteers for four hours, fine, that's right.
So, right now, you know, I'm already starting the other days at eight-thirty in the morning, um, till five-thirty at night. I mean, coming in at seven-thirty till five-thirty at night, it's, I'm not really keen on that.
No.
No. But I think you can stick with your twenty-four hours and have your volunteers come in for the four that you want, need to work on the grant, is what I'm getting at. Dan pretty strongly suggested three consecutive days.
I don't care what Dan thought, this is what the board wants.
And what's best for the community. I'm thinking about the taxpayers and the people trying to pay their taxes that are on fixed income.
And I appreciate that, and when this, when this library costs two percent of the overall town budget, a fifty-three thousand dollar budget to the town with a sixty-one percent savings is pretty remarkable in my book.
Yeah, it's probably gonna make, go down the numbers, I think, you, when all of a sudden, uh...
Right. Right.
Oh, yeah, for lots.
And you ha-, still have to provide some kind of services, not, you know, um...
Well, I know, but you said you were gonna get volunteers, and I was just a suggestion, that would be a good time for volunteers to come while you're doing your grants, because other than that... I just don't think the one day a week of heating up to ten degrees for four months of the year is gonna totally...
But you have to understand, we have part-time people that are... We have part-time people working now, and I'm already still being called out because a computer doesn't print.
Yeah.
And so on, and this is what I'm talking about, that's where that genealogy research, somebody walks in and wants to... I wanna search for my aunt, and you just never know when they're going to do that, they don't call and schedule that stuff, so...
Are you ghost upstairs now?
Not at five-thirty, they did, yeah.
Did you hear the doors closing?
Well, I was hoping it wasn't the ghost.
Oh. It'd be Halloween.
All right, so this floors...
And then, like I said, the only other thing that I would like to make sure that, is that I still continue to keep accruing, my time goes towards my vacation and holiday pay, um, because, and personal time. Because, you know, it did pre-, prior, cause I was a department head, that's right in the employee manual, um, that even though I was part-time, they still considered that I should be getting, that I was department head, and that I should be getting, accruing my vacation time.
Let us discuss that, and you work that one.
Okay, so I'll, uh, type up these changes that we've made and send that to everybody, just so we'll have it all in writing. And so what is the final figure, excuse me, Brian? Which figure? The final figure that we came up with our changes. Uh, so the board proposal for total budget is fifty-nine, five, seventy-two. The board contributing six thousand, three fifty. Total expense to the town, fifty-three thousand, two, twenty-two. Thank you. Never leave.
I think that is a great working document, thank you all. I don't know if anyone else has been stressing about it since, uh, last week, but I have.
Okay, I borrowed, I'm returning. Okay, thank you.
Having, having said that, now there's been rumors that he may try to push his proposal to the town council for the, at the next meeting.
What you saw online, was that from a guy named Sean Knoll on Facebook?
I believe so, Sean.
He already told us he was gonna give the proposal to council.
He already gave the proposal.
He's already submitted that proposal to council for a decision on...
November sixteenth.
On November sixteenth.
So these meetings we're having is to come with our own proposal that we can submit to the other...
Because when we got here last time, we were supposed to have two meetings. Right, I think what you should do at this point is invite Dan on your tenth, on the tenth meeting, because he can always pull back that, that proposal.
Cause I, I had posted last meeting on Facebook and I made it public, so I assume that's what's circulating around. Uh, but it, it is his intention to, uh, his proposal to the council, and correct me and add to it if I'm wrong, is that he's going, wants to eliminate the librarian, fill it with part-time staff, have it run three days a week, what's that?
And volunteer. And volunteer.
It's that, right, volunteers and, and that.
That, and they would have no experience, none of them, in what is required of a nice building.
And, and it's not just coming in and cataloging books and checking books out.
It is not.
The requirements that the state, um, has to have for her reporting, uh, she's a librarian for the elementary school.
Yeah, we have, we have to have a director. Um, in fact, here, he can have a copy of these, so these are the main state library standards and what they require.
I, so I'm only part-time in the library right now, that will change hopefully in January, but right now, um, I am just in the elementary school library for, yeah, for four hours a day. And I'm a title one at tech in the morning, but when I have my masters, which will, well, I'm going to have a waiver from the state, Department of Education, and in January, I'll, will that, that, that time become district librarian. And I will work in both schools, so I'll be full-time in the library. Um, at the moment, it will be thirty-seven point...
Is that every two weeks?
No, that's every week.
Okay, every week, thirty-seven hours.
Thirty-seven point seven-five.